All right. This is the public hearing on the presented 2021 fiscal year budget for the St. Mary's County Public Schools. Let's see. So, the purpose of this public hearing is to provide citizens the opportunity to give input into the recommended budget that Dr. Smith and the school system have put together. We will not be responding to questions. And once again, we ask that you have signed in at the beginning. And I think Kathy has the speakers list. And last call, anyone had, Kathy just picked up the list. If you have anything, please let her know. You will be called in order that you signed in. Please come to the podium up here and state your name. Speakers are allowed three minutes to speak, and you may now yield your time to someone else. When you hear the beeper, please summarize your closing statement so we can move on to the next speaker. If you have any written statements, you are more than welcome to provide them to Kathy, and they all go on a file for us. So, anyone have any comments before we begin from the board?
No.
Okay. Then let's begin.
Our first speaker is Jill Morris.
Good evening, St. Mary's County Public School Board of Ed and Dr. Smith. And I just want you to see our beautiful blue educators in the room came out to support your budget this evening. So, let me just start by saying this, there will be no ripping up of anything tonight. Just let me start by saying that, all right? Because this is a great budget that puts people first. Can you hear, can everybody hear me? I'm loud though, but okay, all right. This is a great budget that puts people first. I am so proud of what the superintendent perceives our needs to be. I am proud that year after year, he asks for what our students and our staff deserve. And you as the Board of Ed back him up 100%. I just said, my rep assembly last night stood up and said, "I am so proud to be part of a school system that honors our negotiated agreement." And every year, you have funded our step. In this past year, we got a fabulous 2% COLA. We're very proud of that. And as everybody in the room mostly knows, we are in negotiations. We hope to finish up, I think, this month. Right, Dr. Walker? We hope, right? We hope to finish up this month. And I know, I told my rep assembly last night, all that were there, that once you sign that agreement, you will be honoring that agreement. And that is a great relief, and it lets us plan. So, when you present a budget that's this thoughtful and visionary and takes into account the needs of our staff, it lets us feel that we have a place and a voice and that you care about us. So, when the, our three signs up here, students, school, and staff, when you go to the first page in this, you see people. And everybody knows I'm the president, and I call myself the president with presence. I also like to think of myself as a president of positivity. And I positively love this budget. And I'm going to have some of our other members come up and talk to you a little bit more about what they see in this budget and some other needs. Just thank you so much for being a Board of Education that listens. And you're going to hear about some of the things that you changed because you listened to your educators this year. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Kristy Mattingly.
My name is Kristy Mattingly, and I am a preschool special ed teacher at Benjamin Banniger. Imagine, if you will, a day in the life of a special ed educator, full of commitments, responsibilities, meetings, paperwork, and somewhere, time to actually teach. Hard to imagine? Let me throw some words at you. Huge, immense, enormous, colossal, tremendous. I could keep going, but there's no word that encompasses the amount of work a special education educator is required to complete. Students in need of special education instruction require much more than typically developing students. Their needs are documented in their individual education plan, an IEP, which is a legally binding document, which educators themselves spend large amounts of time assessing, writing, and collecting data on. The amount of time it takes to make one IEP is phenomenal. Some can take a total of 10 hours to write from start to finish. This does not even include the time spent assessing a student, evaluating the results, and meeting with the IEP team. Now imagine having 10 students with IEPs. How about 20? This is the reality for most special educators. And the workload does not stop there. There are materials that need to be produced to support instruction, data on goals to be collected, behavior support, reinforcement schedules, visual schedules. The list of work to be done is the present that just keeps giving. Fortunately, special education teachers have these amazing people called special education paraeducators to help lighten this heavy load. Tonight, I thank you, Dr. Smith and SMCPS Board of Education, for advocating for the success of students in need of special education and those educators who support them. The proposed 4% increase in the 2021 budget for special education, including five new special education teachers and paraeducators, is necessary to meet and exceed the requirements special ed education entails. I trust that our children can count on their elected officials to equally respect special needs. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patricia Burnett.
Good evening. My name is Pat Gronard, and I teach science at Chopticon High School. I've been a teacher for over 20 years in St. Mary's County Public Schools. I am speaking to you tonight on behalf of many staff members on concerns about workload. In my point of view for my classroom and my responsibilities, most of the workload that's been added to our responsibilities every year is vitally important. The problem is the lack of time to perform these duties. Our contractual school day has not increased in decades. It is still 7:45 to 3:15 at the high school level. Pre-computer and pre-no child left behind age, we would get a bulletin in our mailboxes the beginning of the week with all the necessary information. With the advent of the computer and no child left behind, the workload has seriously increased. For example, our day begins at 7:45 and our first bell rings at 7:50. Our computers in no way can boot up fast enough within five minutes to be able to set our smart boards nor even read some emails before the day begins. Many of us come in earlier just to do those responsibilities. The amount of email messages from administrators, counselors, ISI, staff members, general announcements to the staff and parents, come in about an average two per half an hour, mostly due during duty day. It usually takes us at least two to three planning periods of time to read, answer, or file away these emails on average per week. This does not include our school's bulletins, our content area monthly bulletin, and the signal. We are also spending four days after the students leave in meetings per month. Many go beyond 3:15. Sometimes we could stay, and sometimes we can't. That time period of 30 minutes is now lost in meetings when we have classroom responsibilities to still complete. Even the professional week in the beginning of the school year is filled with meetings almost all day outside of the one classroom prep day, which we're grateful for. The problem is, by the time we go through our meetings, we need to implement the new strategies or directives in our area, and we're not given enough time to even get a start on fulfilling those tasks during that week. In getting into this great profession, I realized I would be giving somewhere between 10 to 15 hours more of work than we're getting paid for. That time has significantly increased. With an increasing amount of state testing and the need to help students raise achievement, many of my colleagues in response to, "How are we raising achievement?", have given more assignments. Unfortunately, to assign more assignments equally means more assignments to grade and more time to grade them. I very much agree with the 10-day window to enter grades so that parents and students get proper feedback. But the increase in grading time increases the number of hours from the past that we are currently spending. I know of many colleagues that go home and spend five to six hours grading each day in addition to creating new assignments, especially for those in the content areas with a new curriculum and state testing. My suggestion to solving some of the time problem would be to reduce meetings, give us more professional responsibility time the first week of school, and time during two-hour early dismissals. This wouldn't cost anything but time. Time to do our jobs efficiently without multitasking and giving our full undivided focus on instruction and our students. And I thank you for voting in that new calendar we got, where our interim and our quarter days to our early dismissal are given to professional responsibilities. That is really making a difference in our morale as we speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Petty.
Good evening, BOE members and superintendent. We are here tonight to voice the concerns we have as St. Mary's County school bus drivers and attendants. We appreciate the opportunity to address where we feel we stand today in the areas of pay and lack of support from the school board. Many bus drivers feel as though they have been the forgotten ones for way too long when it comes to the BOE budget. We are a group of highly trained and responsible individuals. Many of us go above and beyond our assigned duties on a daily basis while sometimes working under very adverse conditions. We consider ourselves to be truly blessed to work alongside other trained and dedicated professionals. Pay is one of the top reasons many drivers leave the job. Many of us love the job we do, but it's hard to support yourself and your family on a little under $17,000 a year. Many leave to seek higher-paying jobs or try to take on second jobs to make ends meet. Many who do this job are single parents, and many of us took this job as a means to spend more time with our families. Some of us have second incomes in the household, but some do not and are the sole support for their family. This year in the BOE budget, it has been proposed that the contractors will receive $20 an hour plus 25% as a flat rate per driver and 15 an hour plus a 25% as a flat rate for the attendance. They are, they, they are being given the option to tier this amount if they choose to. However, some are going to pay all their drivers and attendants the flat rate regardless of their tenure or experience level. This is unacceptable for many tier-two and tier-three drivers and attendants. It will not be fair for a driver or attendant who has just obtained their certification or license to make as much as someone who has been driving or attending for 10-plus years, as an example. The increase, while it is a start, has still not brought us close to the AWI, which is the average wage increase dictated by the Social Security. And many of us feel this raise is way overdue. We also feel it is necessary to go the step further and develop a pay system that is tiered to reflect experience and tenure. I believe some contractors will step up to the plate and ensure that those that are 10-plus years will be compensated correctly. Some contractors have expressed fear that there may be a bidding war for good drivers, and I have a packet prepared for you that explains that a little bit better. Some of these contractors might not be able to compete and may lose drivers and attendants due to this flat rate. Low pay is the number-one reason school bus drivers leave to seek employment in other fields. We earn less than most other CDL drivers on the road. We are paid less than drivers and attendants in our two neighboring counties. This is not anything new, and drivers and attendants in these counties are also requesting pay increases. Wages in our profession has not grown as much as rates in other skilled fields. Minimum wage is to reach $15 an hour in Maryland by 2025. In comparison, if we've received just 3% increases by 2025, lowest tier would, will be paid just $19.90 an hour. This seems low, especially when you have to have a specialized license and have all the other job requirements and responsibilities we have. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tina Shirley.
Lack of support is another leading reason drivers leave. This is one of a handful of jobs where your back is turned to 30-plus individuals while you're trying to supervise at any given time. Add that to, add to that contending with the hazards of navigating safely down the road at the same time. If that's not enough, then you could have issues between the students on your bus causing you to have, to take your eyes off the road to look in your mirror. I equate this to the same as texting and driving. These are scary thoughts, but this happens daily on our buses. We are responsible for student management on our buses, which is, in itself, is a huge responsibility. This becomes especially difficult to handle when you're not getting enough support from the schools or parents. When we, we want everyone to understand how dangerous this continued behavior and lack of support is for all on the bus. Most drivers start out with trying to make the students understand how their behavior affects others. It's only after you have run through all the options that you have no choice but to write a referral. There are good parents and good administrators out there, and they do handle the problems, but a lot of drivers feel as though they're not receiving the consistent support they need. This can be very frustrating, and there are days many of us feel like quitting. However, we don't find, we don't, and find some way to cope and make it through. Also, the lack of support and consistency is causing many drivers to be fearful of the students. More often than not, as punishment for serious offenses, students are given in-school detention and no suspension off the bus. This is very ineffective and is emboldening the students to continue their bad behavior and even going as far as intimidating the driver or attendant. Basically, we are told, "This is how it is, and just drive the bus." We have heard more stories as of late of this happening. What is it going to take before the BOE, schools, and parents are going to step in and fix this issue? A driver or attendant physically harmed, a student severely injured, or worse yet, a major bus accident. We are solely liable for what happens on our buses, and it is a great burden for any one person to bear. Proper correction of these types of misconduct needs to be consistent and immediate. Lack of benefits is another leading reason most leave this job. We have no retirement other than our Social Security to rely on. Health benefits in our county is solely for the driver. We have no paid holidays, sick leave, and if we need a sub, they are, they are hard to come by and many times cost the driver more than what we make. Think about that. Take a sick day and lose money for doing the right thing and finding a bus, a sub-driver. The basic health insurance plan available to the drivers comes at a high premium when compared to our basic rate of pay. The driver wants additional coverage for family as well as raises, raises the monthly premium. This places an additional hardship on those that are already struggling to make ends meet. There are some drivers that feel as though they are driving just to get the insurance because of how little is left after premiums. Our healthcare only pays for the contracted employee. If we want to add a family member, it costs extra. We know how this program is set up for us. Question is, can the BOE provide more money for this benefit to ease the burden on the contracted employee? Have the contractors gone and consulted with other providers to see if they can get a better plan so we can add family members at a lower cost? We need a better plan to drive down costs to the employee. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cece Lyons.
The lack of sub-drivers is a problem here in St. Mary's County. If you are sick, it is extremely hard to find a sub, but there are none. Just this week alone, we have had contractors have to split runs or drivers just drive their buses extremely sick. We don't have an option to call in or call out and have someone drive for us. Either you find a sub on your own or you drive your bus. Pay and discipline concerns are major reasons for the shortage of sub-drivers. It is worth, is it worth saying again? As I stated earlier, sub-drivers, in most cases, are paid more than the regular route drivers because of this shortage. This year, we also lost our life insurance. We were given the option of buying Aflac. Those who did it are paying out of their own pockets for it. It is an additional cost if you want life insurance through Aflac. The majority of us would rather have the life insurance back than have Aflac at all. While it is only $20,000, it would have paid for funeral expenses. When the question of why we lost the insurance was asked, the only response we got was, "No one was using it." Well, nobody's using it because we're all still behind the wheel of that school bus. We were never given the option if we wanted to keep the life insurance coverage. Many of us were very angry that it was taken away. Why wasn't it offered? Why wasn't it offered as an option for the drivers to keep it? And for the attendants? If, if they wanted, if they wanted it and to pay for it out of pocket or 50-50 split with the contractors? Some contractors offer some paid holidays and some sick days, but not all. Some pay health insurance for their employees, but not all the contractors do. There was a time when some contractors even offered to pay drivers and attendants a 401K plan. However, as of right now, we don't believe anyone of the contractors is. We need to have something else other than just our Social Security to fall back on when we retire. We all believe that it is time for contractors and the Board of Ed and the county commissioners to step up is the way, is way in the past. It has been far too long since we have received a substantial pay raise. The last time we received over 4% was in 1997, '98, and again, 2001, 2002 school year. We are lagging behind Charles and Calvert Counties in compensation. We are first step in all our children, we are the first step in all our children getting to school to receive their education. Some days, we're the first adult these kids see. We are not here to place blame on anyone. We're just asking for you, St. Mary's County Public Schools or contractors and the St. Mary's County Commissioners to take our valid concerns very seriously. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sharon Page.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Page, and I'm a school nurse at Hollywood Elementary. I've been an employee of St. Mary's County Schools for 16 years. I know about St. Mary's County Public Schools because I also had three children who went through the school system, and they did great there. I was also PTA president. So, I have a long history with St. Mary's County Public Schools, and I appreciate everything that the board has done. I've been very interested since this board became an elected board, and I think that was a great thing that happened. The first thing I want to say is thank you first. Thank you for believing in people. Thank you for investing in people. And thank you for believing in our future. Because the one thing I am passionate about is children. I've always been passionate about children, and that has never changed in my entire life. I did not know what I was going to talk about, and Jill said to me, "What are you passionate about?" Well, it's the health and well-being of children and the health and well-being of our educators and every staff member. I appreciate that you even have, that we have nurses in the schools. When we moved here in 1993, there was no nurse in my children's school. And then there was one who came two days a week. Well, I am very proud to be a St. Mary's County Public School nurse. We have a nurse in every school, and I am very grateful for that. Our parents should be very grateful for that, and we appreciate your support. But I, what I will tell you is, we are all very tired. The staffs are tired. The building service workers are tired. The teachers are tired. Everybody's tired because we're doing more with less, and we keep doing it. And that's because we have great staff members who want to do everything they can for these children. You all are a very friendly audience. You know this. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. You know how hard we work. You know that people stay up late and make lesson plans. You know that we feed the children. Because children, more of them are coming to school every day without their basic needs being met. Some of them, I don't know how they come to school because of the obstacles they have to overcome just to get to the front door. We're there. We feed them. We clothe them. We teach them how to brush their teeth. We teach them how to change their clothes. We teach them how to write a report. We teach them everything. And what I want to say is, thank you because we now have new social workers coming on board. Many times, I am not the nurse. I am the social worker. Many times, teachers come to me with information that they should not have to listen to and information that I should not have to listen to. And more importantly, information, things happen to these children that they should not have to live through. So, I appreciate you putting people first. We need to take care of our own. We need to take care of our staff. We need to take care of our pupils. And I just want to encourage you all to don't back down. Keep fighting. And when we talk to the Board of County Commissioners, just say no. This is what we need. And we will be there cheering you on because the children of St. Mary's County are the future of St. Mary's County, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Tammy Payne.
So, I'm here on behalf of ESMIC and as a parent. So, and I'm Tammy Payne, and I teach at Leonard Town Middle School, and I've been there 17 years. And I have to tell you that I was not a proponent of second chance breakfast. I thought, "Oh, holy hell, this is going to be a mess all over our building." And I have to tell you that having children and the numbers of children that we have, getting food, getting breakfast, and eating it, not playing with it, not throwing it around the room, is a huge bonus because they are more active. They are more able to actually concentrate and produce more. And that has made a huge difference. So, I thank you for that because that was something I thought, "Oh, my God." However, I am now a proponent of it. And of course, I have a little kid who brings me chocolate milk every morning, but that's a different story. So, and whether I want it or not. Now, as a parent, I have a child who is a teacher, and he teaches at the college level down in Florida. But I also have a student child who was, and he is a student forever, and amen. And he is a special ed para or was for three years, two and a half years. And at Christmas time, expecting his first child on my birthday in eight days, came to me and said, "Mom, I have to tell you, I quit." He's in school to be a teacher. He had to quit as a special ed para educator because he found a part-time, a full-time job working in a cigar shop, cigar bar, making $5,000 more a year than what a special ed para educator makes with a college degree. Add to that, you take out the, and I, and I feel for you guys with your insurance, but because he's paid so little as a para educator, he dropped the insurance to go over here to social services, and he pays $1.27 a month for his insurance. A month. And you guys, I thought it was different insurance? No, it's Blue Cross, Blue Shield, HMO. It's the same coverage. How can we get our people, our younger people, in a situation where, yes, it's wonderful that we have tuition reimbursement? Don't get me wrong. That's great. And if you want to be an educator, it's $4,100 a year. I was so excited to have him apply for that, but you know the problem is? He makes so little that he's fully granted, so we can't even take advantage of that money. Why? Why are they not earning a living wage? My son, expecting his first child, is in the poverty level. He had no choice but to quit. Thank you.
That's it.
I don't have anybody else. Do you want to give me their comments?
That would be fun. Anyone else from the audience? Okay. On behalf of the board, we thank everyone for their comments. As you know, and Jill, you sit through all the budget sessions with us at the county commissioner meetings. You know, we, we do fight for every single dollar that we get every single year, and it's not always pretty, but we do. And... And, you know, we do the best we can. We do a lot of educating of the county commissioners for different programs and things that we do, even throughout the county, because unfortunately, for everything that we do and offer to the students and families, and I understand the volume of wraparound services that we offer now that we didn't even five years ago or six years ago when I first came on here. It is tremendous. And unfortunately, I think we need some type of big media campaign of everything that we do provide to the students and families within the school system because I don't know how widespread it is among, you know, the parents, I think, understand the students and the parents who receive the services, but I don't know if everyone else does. You know, to the bus drivers, we've been thinking about this for, you know, number. It's a priority in the budget. And, you know, once again, you know, we will continue to fight for every dollar that we can get. And I thank all of you for your comments and taking the time tonight. And we will see how the rest of the budget process goes. So, and I think the public comment's still open, so even if, you know, you know of someone who has something that they would like to say that they didn't get here this evening, you know, please send us an email. Dr. Smith, do you have any wise words to close out?
I'm gratified by the positive things said tonight. I continue to be challenged by the challenging things said tonight. I absolutely positively recognize the need for people to make a living wage and for people who work with children to earn a living wage. And to our bus drivers, and, you know, we are proposing increases, and we will continue to work through all of that. We will sit down with contractors and talk through all of that as it goes on. And for our paraeducators and our special education paraeducators in particular, we do need to look at that. We absolutely too do need to look at that. So we're in the same boat, Ms. Payne. My son with a bachelor's degree is doing the exact same thing, and he is earning $23,000 a year. So, but he wants to be an educator as well, and he wants to work through it. And I said, "There's no greater experience than actually being in a title school and seeing the needs of children and recognizing that if that is something, that's a true and deep call." And educators, more than any other people, and people who work with educators and work with children, your day never ends. Your day never ends. You carry those kids with you every single night, and you carry them all summer, and you carry them for years and years afterwards. You'll remember the kindness of a child. You'll remember the struggles of a child. So just thank you very much, everybody, for coming out. We have a long road ahead of us. We need to make sure that everybody understands why we are asking for what we are asking for and that every single thing is an absolute and explicit need for our kids and for the people who work with our kids. And just thank you very much for this evening.